Welcome into the PHNX Coyotes podcast, brought to you by the DraftKings Sportsbook app, America's top rated sportsbook app. Don't forget to hit that like button while you're here. Subscribe wherever you get your podcasts. Leave us a five star review. I'm Liam Merrill, here with Steve Peters in New York City, Craig Morgan in an undisclosed location, and Espo joining us from his closet in his house. Welcome to a celebration and the first step in a long process for the Arizona Coyotes to end up in Tempe. Here we are, everyone.
I'll start, because Craig and I have both been through this multiple times. I've sat in Glendale City Councils, Scottsdale City Councils, like honestly, it was literally the same thing. Just watch those over again, hit rewind, you know how it's gonna end up. At least we thought we did all the way through it. And what really frustrates me about this whole process today is we really didn't get any farther. Like, we moved the ball along a little bit, and yes, but they're not putting shovels in the ground next week. They're not clearing out debris. We're not digging out garbage. This is just the beginning. Like, this is, there is so much work to be done now. Like, this was, yeah, it's great. We're thrilled. We're so happy it's moving forward. There's a lot of work to do.
Craig?
Yeah, sorry guys, I'm gonna be on a bit of delay since I'm joining from Mars where I'm actually vacationing. And by the way, Petey has the best backdrop of all of us without question. I've got this like homey cabin feel. Petey's got New York City.
Four different vibes happening.
Yeah, yeah. So, in response to what you just said, Petey, you're right, this is just the first step. It means that they can negotiate. But my sense, and if you saw the comment that Vice Mayor Randy Keating had during the meeting, that Chirsten tweeted, it had a different feel to it today. I think the council in some ways was waiting for the Coyotes to really step up and impress, and to really come out guns blazing, really, really show some polish and some organization and some commitment. I think they did all that today. I think the Coyotes did a really good job today at the meeting. And the sense that I keep getting from sources is that there's a widespread belief that this is a really good deal for whichever municipality accepts it. So, while they're, this is the Coyotes, so we could hit any number of hurdles along the way. We're all conditioned to expecting those to come somewhere along the track. But this has a different feel to it. There's a lot of positivity around this deal. And quite frankly, they've never gotten to this step before. It's never gotten this before. Those of you who remember the last time they flirted with Tempe, with ASU, there was a press conference where the Coyotes showed up and ASU did not. That was a really weird press conference to cover. This was entirely different. I thought the Coyotes knocked it out of the park today. They had players speaking, they had Shane Doan speaking, attorney Nick Wood, wow, just dropped the mic, and then Hugh Holman follows with an unbelievable speech as well. There was a lot of, just from a journalist standpoint, there was some great content today at this meeting.
Yeah, it was absolutely electric. And before we move on, let's just clarify what the yes decision today means. It means that the city and the developer, which, so the Coyotes and their group can negotiate. It's not an approval of the project itself. The decision will trigger a months-long process, joy, that will include community input and more public meetings. Yay! But to Craig's point, there were some amazing things in this. The video that the Coyotes showed at the beginning of the meeting had me fired up. It was awesome. Shane Doan spoke, like you said. Clayton Keller, Nick Schmaltz, Christian Fisher were there. Clayton Keller said some words. We heard from Lindsey Frye. We heard from Carly Ocardo. We heard from 100, well, there were 100 public commenters. Not all of them commented. Some of them were accidental repeats. 100 public commenters listed and 228 written comments to be read. People care about this. People care. It was awesome to see.
It is, and you want that fan support. You want to see those fans out there. And I was kind of disheartening to hear some of the comments. And I know, I don't want to pick on Lauren too much, but to say, oh, it's all the fans they have. Like, really? Like, is it even necessary to make those tongue-in-cheek comments in the setting that she was in tonight? Like, I don't, I didn't find it appropriate. I didn't find it funny. I don't know what she was trying to say. On the flip side, having the support of the fans and the team and the players. And I talked, at the top of the show, I said, this has happened in Glendale. They didn't get this kind of support from the players, from, the owner showed up and they did those speeches. But this was different. And to Craig's point, this felt different today. And I think that this was, was a coming together of the two entities. I really felt that through this, that there was kind of a combination of the Tempe Coyotes. Like, I can start to feel it. It's something to start to get excited about here. And, you know, we talked about the pictures and the renderings and where this is gonna go and what it's gonna look like. It's, oh shit, this is kinda cool. Like, it's something to get excited about.
Look, the, it was grandstanding, Petey, is what it comes down to. She has two months left on the Tempe City Council, has greater aspirations politically. It was completely grandstanding. But tonight was the longest first date in the history of first dates, right? This thing takes almost eight hours. Really, it's just a bunch of flirting so you can find out if you want to go on another date before you decide, do we want to get married eventually? That's all tonight was. But it's exciting that, hey, they at least earned a second date. I mean, I didn't get a lot of those in college, so it's nice that the Coyotes move on to phase two.
No, it is. Go ahead, Craig, and time delayed Craig.
So, I want to know what everybody's favorite part of this meeting was tonight. I'm gonna go back to Nick Wood, because I know that the Coyotes have been dying to get this out there to categorically and systematically shoot down every one of Sky Harbor's points. And boy, did Nick bring his A-game tonight. We've talked for a while about how this whole thing was just, quite frankly, a bunch of BS from Sky Harbor. A lot of their issues were non-issues. They were, speaking of grandstanding, and I felt like it was the city of Phoenix, you know, the ventriloquist or just moving, moving the puppet's mouth. Most of, most of the issues that they've raised are non-issues, and Nick Wood, Nick Wood finally pointed out why they're non-issues. And even the issue of residences, I'm not sure they have a leg to stand on there if this gets legally challenged. I don't know that Sky Harbor can do anything to stop this at this point, or the city of Phoenix can do anything to stop this at this point. It was nice just to hear it all finally come out.
Yeah, I don't want to make light of this, but if a plane loses an engine anywhere along that runway, that's problematic. Not just if there's, there's apartments somewhere near there as well, like, that whole thing. But my favorite part had to be the giblets comment, right? Talking about the gib, I'm frantically searching, government giblets, what are we talking about here? And got nowhere except recipes for turkey giblets. So that was probably my favorite.
Yeah, but that giblet, which giblet? That giblet? Yeah, I didn't get it. Honestly, I thought my, like, the computer wasn't working. I swear I've never heard that term in those settings before. Again, it's, it's just, it's, it's great. I'm thrilled. I am excited now that we can maybe move forward a little bit. And there are a couple of things for me. The highlight for me was, was the tease by the NHL that this could be a site of an All-Star game and a draft. And we talked, the All-Star game was supposed to be here in Arizona in Glendale during the lockout in 2004, '05. Or, is it '04, '05? Yeah. It was supposed, they were supposed to have it already. Didn't happen. It would be fantastic to have it along the waterfront in Tempe, close to downtown, close to Old Town. Fantastic way to highlight Tempe and the Arizona community, and great for hockey. That was the highlight for me, seeing that, hey, there are some real plans. The league wants it here. The NHL wants it here. Bettman wants it here. The Coyotes are gonna be here. And it's just nice to see that maybe they're a step closer to having a 30-year home in the desert.
Yeah, that was a highlight for me, was the 30-year commitment. And it was funny, because I tweeted from the B account, like, you know, RIP the relocation rumors. And everyone was like, yeah, but people just tend to ignore facts, which is true. So that was, that was a big one for me. I completely forgot about the All-Star game and the draft promise, because it was so early in the eight-hour meeting that I just spent eight hours of my life tuning into. But also, just some other funny highlights, like, one of the speakers toward the end was just this guy who went up there, and he was just like a bro. And it was just so genuine in his speech. And I just felt like, you know, the whole thing, so much of it was so political and so buttoned up. And this guy was like, you know what? I love this team. This is great. Shane Doan's great. And that's just how most fans feel. And I just felt like he was a voice for a lot of fans. Nick Wood dunking on the airport was incredible, especially when he said, oh, like, they accidentally shared with me that they were trying to extend the runway. It was like unbelievable theater. I loved it so much.
Yeah, but Craig, I have a question for Craig now. Now, this opens, we've talked a lot about the airport, but doesn't this officially open the door now for discussions with the actual FAA to have a report on this? Like, isn't this the EPA, the FAA, financial documentation? Like, this is where all the supposition goes away, and here's the facts. Doesn't that happen now?
Yeah, it does. And the Coyotes have been anxious to get to this point where they could actually lay out their case. Look, they expected some hurdles. They expected to, you know, have these various bodies, whether it's the EPA or the FBI, come back to them and say, hey, we have some concerns. What Javier Gutierrez has said all along, we'll work with them. We get it. We're not gonna be perfect coming out of the gates, but we'll work with them to try and address those concerns. They've already done some of that. You saw all the discussion about Crane Heights. I've learned far too much about aviation. I never want to do this again. Just like I never want to cover a city council meeting again, which is actually why I decided to go on vacation this week. But they'll work with them. They're willing to get this right. They understand that there are going to be some concerns. They just hadn't had the opportunity to really put their side of it out there because of procurement laws. They finally got to do it today. And like I said before, man, it was, it was really cool to hear them finally delivering. And the other thing that struck me, you know, I expected to see a ton of residents come out against this. And we saw some of that, and there were, man, there were just some, I don't even know how to characterize some of what we saw. The public commenting part of these meetings is always just, it's just bananas. They're just a bunch of nut jobs up there. And half the time, you're like, what are you talking about? What are you talking about right now? But there was a lot of support for the Coyotes as well today. How about Hugh Holman showing up? The former Tempe mayor, and we know he wrote that incredible editorial, but Hugh Holman's out there stumping for the Coyotes and for the city, for the city of Tempe. Hugh Holman thinks this is a great deal. Neil Gileano thinks this is a great deal. There are a lot of people who understand how these deals work, who can analyze these deals, and think it's a fantastic deal for the city of Tempe. That's a big step for this franchise.
Yeah, and I think that that's what's gonna come, come to bear over the next few months. And I've always been, hey, I pay taxes too. Well, most of the time, but anyway, like, so I'm a taxpayer. I get it. I don't want to waste taxpayer money. I get that. But, I mean, from what I heard tonight, that's not why this, this deal is set up. Yes, if you want to use taxes raised from sales from that commute, that, you know, the venue, well, yeah, that money would not be there if not for the venue. So use that tax money to do things to better the venue. Absolutely agree with that. Now, me paying out of my pocket, that's different, but that's not what this is. And I, I don't know if people are missing that. Like, there are, there are arenas across this country that are fully funded by taxpayers. It's happened coast to coast. This arena isn't that. This isn't that deal. This is a really good deal for people in Tempe. Now, you talk about other things like traffic, and I get it, the police force, and come on, like, come on, like, no, like, those kind of things drove me nuts. Traffic? Yeah. Guess what? People are gonna come to the games. People are gonna come to concerts. And guess what else they're gonna bring? They're gonna bring their wallets, and they're gonna, they're gonna buy dinner. They're gonna get, they're gonna pay for parking. They're gonna spend more money in your community. And I just think it's a win for Tempe, and it's fantastic for hockey fans to have this whole new community built in the East Valley.
Yeah, certain members of that council were acting as if this site is in the boonies, nowhere near the 202. There's, there's an off-ramp right there. Like, it's ridiculous. But opening night in Tempe, Nick Wood's jersey has to go up in the raft. That's how good he was tonight for this franchise.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it, see your point there, Espo. First of all, on the deal, I think it's, it should be indicative to people of how good this deal looks, at least right now. You know, they're gonna dive into the details, obviously, in negotiations. And I, and I do think that there will be more concessions along the way. But the fact that, you know, I'm being told by sources that there are other municipalities that were also pursuing the Coyotes because of this deal, that should tell you a lot about this deal. There are not a lot of these deals like this one, structured like this one. Like Petey mentioned earlier, a lot of them are taxpayer-funded. There are some concessions from the taxpayers, but it's mostly what's generated on-site. Basically, if you don't go to a game, you're not gonna pay anything for the Coyotes being in Tempe. That's, that's how this is all structured to work. The other thing about the location, I've heard the same thing from so many people. Wow, it doesn't look like it's gonna be a great location. You know, that two-lane road in on Rio Salado. Like, have you been to NHL arenas around the country? Like, where's Petey going, you know, for these games right now? Isn't MSG easy to reach in the middle of Manhattan? Hell, no, it's not. I grew up in Chicago. Try getting to United Center. It's nuts trying to get to some arenas. This is one of the best locations. It's right off the freeway. It's a terrific location.
Well, and we're three or four years away. I'm pretty sure you could widen a road by then. That's just, you know, it seemed like such a, a small thing to get caught up on in that time. I also, I was very confused by the, the Coyotes' credit report that, that she put up there at one point, where claiming the team can only get $5,000 worth, worth of credit, you know. I don't, I didn't know where that came from. It seemed like a very weird argument and, and went very weird places. It was, it was a bizarre night, but that kind of capped it off for me.
Yeah, I think you can get $5,000 for the credit, can't you, Espo? Well, that's another show.
I just got a lot more than that, but, you know, so I don't know if I can right now, but...
The moment I wanted to see that I didn't get to see today, and people that watch the ASU show know Shane Devenbach as the personality of Betts and the ASU. He was there for the entirety of this meeting with a camera, and he was helping produce Chirsten's spots. He was there the entire time. I was waiting for him to get to the mic and say, what's, who would win in a fight, a bear or a bison? Like, yes.
I'm so upset that we didn't think to send someone up in the three minutes and say, everybody follow @PHNX_underscore_ Coyotes on Twitter, and tune into our post-council meeting live show on the PHNX Sports YouTube channel. And speaking of Chirsten, she will be calling in in just a few minutes. Oh, she is calling in sooner than we think.
Unbelievable what you did today. Unbelievable what Chirsten and Shane did today. I did want to say that, because, hey, it's late here, but I didn't have to sacrifice, like, Chirsten and Shane did. What they did today was phenomenal, and the content they were able to create for the PHNX was amazing.
Craig?
Yeah, and I want to echo those thoughts. I mean, Chirsten's a pro. Chirsten's a pro. She's an experienced reporter, and I knew she'd be great in this situation. She killed it today. Which is breaking news, left and right. I'm like, reading the tweets, like, okay, All-Star game, NHL draft, which, by the way, Gary Bettman went back on his word, because I asked him about hosting an NHL draft years ago, and he looked at me like I was absolutely nuts. He's like, are you kidding me? We're gonna spend the summer in Phoenix? I'm like, you do it in Vegas. And he's like, Craig, you could, you could stay indoors in Vegas. You can't do that in Phoenix. Well, now, he's gone back on his word. First time, actually, with regard to Phoenix, that Gary's ever gone back on his word. But a draft and an All-Star game, those are two big deals. Those are two great events that we're gonna see in Tempe at some point if this deal comes to fruition. That's pretty cool. But again, back to the people covering this, big shout out to Chirsten and Shane for being at City Hall for, my God, how many hours was it? It was ridiculous how much time they spent there. And thanks to you guys for covering.
Yes. Thank you, Drew, for the $50 super sticker. We really, really appreciate you. Appreciate everybody watching in the comments. If you're watching on Twitter, head over to PHNX Sports on YouTube. And without further ado, let's bring in Chirsten Susal, live from the Tempe City Council. Chirsten, eight hours, more than that, nine spent in the Tempe City Council. Give us your big takeaways and immediate reactions to this five-to-two yes vote tonight.
Well, my biggest takeaway is this is hopefully the first and only city council meeting that I will ever attend. That's, that's, that's number one. Yeah, number two, I mean, it's probably similarly to, similar to what you guys have already spoken about, but I think it was a big step forward for everyone involved. The city council certainly has a ton of unanswered questions that they still pose. You know, Mayor told me just a minute ago that he's hoping, you know, certain things like the issues that Sky Harbor has with the Coyotes, that the Coyotes will sort of take charge of that and be the leader in those discussions and figuring out those things. But that was just one issue that city council brought up that they still need to work out. And again, they, they said, like, basically, we're doing this because we still think we have further discussions to have. By no means is this, you know, does this mean we're gonna get a deal done? So, you know, there are a lot of questions that were posed that I actually was sitting there, and I was like, I totally understand why city council, while, why, you know, residents of Tempe would have questions about the parking, about potentially the, the raising of prices once again for residents. Is there gonna be affordable housing, those types of things? So, I think it's a pretty exciting time. Vice Mayor Keating, I believe, was the one who made a comment about how, you know, if everything moves, ends up moving forward, tonight is the night that the Coyotes' legacy here in Tempe begins. And I think that's something that they sort of have taken to heart. And it should be an exciting night. Javier Gutierrez, you know, continued to say when we spoke with him, when it was all said and done, that tonight is a night to celebrate. And I think they're, they're, they're viewing it as such.
Absolutely. Chirsten, thank you so much for sitting there for eight hours.
I wanted to ask you.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah. Yeah, Chirsten, after the vote came down, after everybody knew what the verdict was going to be, you know, we watched a lot of the different reactions, a lot of the different comments. What did you sense the mood was at City Hall after the vote came down?
I think for the most part, everyone was just relieved and excited to have basically opened the door for the negotiations. Obviously, a lot of people were relieved in, in the building just to have the conversation be done and over with. But I think excitement, I would say, was the overall feeling of like, hey, we don't know what exactly is to come. But, you know, they even said it, this is the last piece of, of a large chunk of undeveloped land that Tempe has to offer. And so the fact that this could be the beginning of a, of developing that last piece of land, undeveloped piece of land, and the beginning of a relationship with professional franchise, you know, obviously the Coyotes were excited about it. But I think for the most part, people in attendance, as well as city council, just, just excited.
I just can't wait to see how excited Chirsten is to find out Craig is not actually on vacation. He's actually in his garage, and he just didn't want to go. He just didn't want to go there all day. Wow. Wow. Chirsten, I don't know how you did it. I don't know how you did it.
Veteran move.
Yeah, I would definitely tip my cap to you, Craig, if that was the case.
But so what's, and I don't know if this is to Chirsten, or if I don't know if this is to Craig. So what's next? Like, what's, what's Monday morning gonna look like for this? Is it, is stuff gonna start moving forward right away?
So I do know, and Craig, you could probably speak to this as well, but what I was told after the fact is that a lot of the staff here is actually going to kind of take a little bit of a summer break. And so, we asked, you know, is there kind of a timeline to move forward with these negotiations? And right now, there is not one. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Craig, there was one more point that I wanted to make that I'm not sure that you guys touched on. I thought was interesting. I know you mentioned the part of bringing the All-Star game, bringing the draft, which obviously would be big for the city of Tempe. But also the fact that, you know, the Coyotes mentioned that they are potentially looking into owning other teams here in the valley. I don't know if you guys talked about that, but, you know, other, other potential tenants in the arena, which I thought was, was really interesting. And those were, those were a few things that I had not heard prior to, to tonight's, well, today into tonight's meeting that, you know, are kind of game changers.
Absolutely.
Yeah, one of the things that I had reported on already was ASU basketball needs a home, right? The men's and women's basketball programs need a home. ASU has been waiting to see how this whole thing played out. It's, it's possible that this could be a really good solution for Arizona State University, rather than renovating a facility in Desert Financial that, quite frankly, should just probably be knocked to the ground. Rather than building their own facility, imagine just being able to move into an existing facility. That's one option to watch. You mentioned some of the others, maybe some other pro teams. So that's a fascinating thing for me to watch. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, Chirsten, I wonder if it was addressed tonight. We're gonna have a couple city council seats changing hands next month. Did anyone talk about what impact that might have on this entire thing moving forward?
No. And now that you say that, I'm kicking myself for not asking that question after the fact. That wasn't really brought up. There was one city council member that just sort of mentioned that, you know, she wishes that she was gonna be here throughout negotiations. But there was, there wasn't any, there weren't any comments that were made about how that might impact things moving forward. And again, I am kicking myself, Craig, for not asking that question.
Chirsten, I know that you have to get going in a couple of minutes.
We're not holding you at fault for anything.
I don't know, did Chirsten know that he's on a delay, audio delay? Like, that's why we have all this dead airs, because Craig's up in the middle of the wilderness?
Yeah, he's actually in the wilderness. He's not in his garage. I was just gonna say, Chirsten has to go in just a couple of minutes. They're gonna close the doors there at the Tempe City Council. So Chirsten, I just wanted to give you the, any final thoughts that you had after today. I'm sure we'll still be processing this one for a few more days.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just, I think a lot of this is all in the Coyotes' hands. I think they also sort of posed the opportunity for, you know, we, we want you to take the reins on not only, you know, the airport situation and the potential legalities that could arise with that, but also, like, you know, we want the Coyotes to get out into the community and be the ones that are talking with community members to help, you know, let them know, we have answers to your questions. We have solutions to your concerns, and really be the ones that take the reins in sort of settling all these things. So, you know, my big takeaway is, you know, everybody should be excited. I think we sort of had an idea that this was probably the direction that they were going. It certainly opens the doors for potentially a really exciting opportunity, and for the Coyotes to stay in Arizona, and all the things that would come with that. But right now, I think there's a lot on the Coyotes' shoulders to, to take reins after listening to all the potential concerns, and be the ones that are getting themselves out there, getting in front of, you know, the right people and coming up with solutions.
Absolutely. Well, Chirsten, we can't thank you enough for being our boots on the ground today. Everybody, if you're not following her on Twitter already, be sure to be following @Chirsten Susal on Twitter. And you can catch her tomorrow on the rebranded launch of the Phoenix Sports Podcast. So excited.
Heck, yeah.
How come we don't get that? We blew the whole budget on that show? We get this little four-box with Cody, that's it?
Oh, man. Well, Chirsten, we appreciate you.
See you, guys. Have fun, Craig.
And also, I love it. That was excellent. If you haven't listened to this, by the way.
It's like, it's Craig's like drunk uncle. Like, he just spurs stuff in whenever he kind of feels like it. It's not relevant to the conversation. Yeah.
I'm losing it.
Pass that, Craig, sorry.
I wanted to take a second to just give Chirsten credit, not for, not just for being at today's meeting, but also for the story, which is a three-part series that she did on how the Coyotes got to this exact moment in time. If you haven't listened to the story, you can do so wherever you get your podcasts. It's the latest podcast from PHNX. It's excellent. And it's great, you know, additional listening if you're really invested in this whole arena journey. So definitely give that a listen if you haven't already. Before we move on to anything else, Chirsten and Shane, we're on the ground interviewing people, and we do actually have video of an interview with Shane Doan, so let's check that out.
You've been in many city council meetings. How did this one differ from the past?
Well, they're, they're like this. And you understand the importance of it, because the people need to feel that they have the right to come out and say what they want to say. Every single time, it's always, it's, it's always a Every single time it's always, it's, it's always a little different. I don't want to do any more of these. I want this to be over and we want to get this going in the right direction. And, and as Javier said, this is the first step. We know that we have more and we know that we want to be part of it. We want to work with the city. We want to do everything we can to answer their questions and answer the people's questions too. We want this to be a building and a development for everybody, somebody that everyone's proud of. And that's what Javier and Mr. Morello put so much time and effort into doing that.
See, I think that's what I noticed too, that in, in all of this, it seemed like it was a partnership. And we, we've seen these events before. I've seen them in Glendale where we had the fans speak, but it was a different voice today. It was different communities within the hockey community or different communities in different areas of, of backgrounds and, and, and just different, it just felt different that, that they were bringing this, all of this family together. And the Coyotes are the ones that are going to do that with the city of Tempe. It, it really had that partnership vibe. And, and one of the things I'll say too, is we've talked about Morello and sometimes Gutierrez, and whether it's the athletic article or their personal business dealings. You know what? You don't have to be their best friend. You don't have to like them. You don't have to go to dinner with them. But sure as hell be nice if they built you a nice building in the east side of the valley with all the amenities and things that sports fans love. You don't have to love these guys and, and their business practices. You don't. I'm just happy. It felt like the community banded together with one for the Coyotes for the first time in a long time. It didn't feel like everybody was pushing back. There was some, don't get me wrong, but, but it really felt like there was a lot of different voices really coming behind and rallying behind the Coyotes and it felt really nice. Cody's, there were people that pronounced it that way, by the way, today. I'll leave it at that.
I know Craig wants to say something, so we'll let him.
Yeah. I apologize first of all for the delay. Who knows? They may have broken ground on the arena by the time you guys are hearing you speak. But I want to, I want, I want Coyotes fans to go, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to get crazy here. I want Coyotes fans to go ahead and take a step forward, start dreaming a little bit. Imagine going to games in Tempe. Imagine a brand new arena with an entertainment district around it. Imagine all the nightlife options of ASU, of South Scottsdale. Imagine what this is going to be like to finally have this franchise, this team in the right place, in an exciting place. A new chapter in Coyotes hockey. We've been waiting a quarter century for them to turn the corner. This was a major step. So go ahead and, and dream a little dream with me.
Well, let's actually, we have some amazing renderings. This is from the Arizona Coyotes themselves, um, put out these renderings today. I think we have some video of it. So here's their fancy presentation. If you're watching, if you're listening on audio, you can find this on the Arizona Coyotes Twitter account. But it's basically 3D renderings of what the proposed entertainment district is going to look like. So as you're stepping into this dream that Craig has proposed, I mean, this was the moment. And I was in the office with Sean and Emma and some of our other PHNX coworkers. We were stoked about this. I mean, look at this, like the, the rink, the hotel, the shopping district, just how it looks alongside the
Yeah. And here again, Leah, but, but what's there right now?
A dump?
Yeah, like, like who in their right mind doesn't look at this that has anything to do with the city of Tempe and go, oh yeah, this might be a little better than that. This might be better. People might work here. People might have jobs here. This might bring things to the community. Like, are you kidding? This looks absolutely
My gosh, that's like the same jumbo train as in SoFi Stadium, the oval one.
This is fantastic. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm ready. And, and again, so let's go back to the hockey part of it, which we haven't even touched on yet. The, the timing of this honestly couldn't be better when you're talking about getting through a rebuild. By the time this is done and ready to go sitting on the water in Tempe, the Coyotes hockey team's actually going to be kind of good because we're already looking at the draft picks that are coming in. We're talking about Logan Cooley now, and we're talking about Gunner is, is moving on to the next round of the playoffs. Like there's going to be a lot to be excited about and then throw them into a brand new building? Hell yeah. Like this is, the timing could not be better.
Matthews coming.
Austin Matthews coming? Exactly. Exactly.
First off, did anybody catch the name of the restaurant in that rendering? There was a place called Bizarre Meats. It's a weird choice to put in there as a restaurant. If you go back and re-watch it.
I can't believe you saw that, but okay.
I watch for the little things. It's all in the details. But Craig, you've been here long enough in this town that you know, you know, the motto should be when it comes to sports. Without, without hope, there's no true despair. And just keep that in mind. This is step one, and I get dreaming. Dreaming's free. Dreaming's fun. But let's, I would personally temper expectations slightly just to make sure you don't, you don't meet disappointment again.
Last time we invite you on our show, Espo.
Look, I'm happy that they made it here, but there's, there's more work to be done. I think they will get to that finish line and that's when there's a giant celebration.
There's no question there's more work to be done, Espo. But here's the thing about the Coyotes and their fan base. They've been living in despair for a quarter century. You know, they're, they're in the basement right now, Espo. All they've got is hope at this point. So what the heck? Go ahead and dream a little bit because again, like I said before, they've never even gotten to this step in the past. I mean, you could go way back to Los Arcos, I guess, and say that maybe the, that, that process was a little bit forward. But, you know, ever since then, it's been, it's basically been two decades where we've been waiting for something like this to come along. Glendale was a bad decision from the start. We know why Steve Elman did it. He did it for the surrounding Westgate Mall. He didn't do it for the hockey team. We know why Glendale did it because they wanted to put themselves on the map, but it was a poor financial decision and then they were stuck with it. Unfortunately, they didn't, you know, they, they didn't want to stay committed to that. They wanted, they wanted out from under it, I guess. You can't even say that. I, I should back up there because they tried to sign the Coyotes the long-term lease agreement. They wanted the Coyotes. It was clear. They wanted to, to sign them to at least like a 12 to 15 year lease agreement. So they still wanted them, but it just wasn't going to work for the Coyotes out there. So we finally have some hope for them being in the right location. You obviously have to win, but one of the two key ingredients, well, three key ingredients, I would say, stable ownership, the right location, and then you got to win.
Yeah.
This, this is the start of the location, right?
Yeah. Let me say this. I, I was not trying to rain on anybody's parade. I, I've been part of, of pushing for a Coyotes venue since, I mean, 2009, I helped, you know, organize the Save the Coyotes rally out in Glendale. Like I've been around this for a while. And I think this is an amazing opportunity to rectify, uh, what was a mistake over 20 years ago with the Los Arcos deal. I mean, this is, this is literally almost exactly four miles south from where that is. We're going to be able to see, uh, when this comes to fruition, what the last 20 years could have been if that had gotten there. And I'm excited to see it because that's when things get interesting. I remember those first four or five years when they played downtown and how good that team was, how amazing those fans were. And that was with a quarter of those fans sitting in obstructed view seats where they couldn't see one of the nets. Like that, this fan base is dedicated. They're passionate and the city loves the game of hockey because there's so many transplants from the East Coast. I'm excited to see where this goes and I very badly want to see it to come, come to fruition. So I hope I didn't make it sound like I, I didn't feel that way, but you know, I very much do.
But it, but on the same note, Espo, it's, and that's what I was kind of alluding to earlier. It's not time to pop the champagne bottles. Like as I was listening to all these people, I'm going, relax. Like everybody's, I get it. And we had to move the ball forward and this is a step in the process that had to happen. We're not there yet. Like it's, it's, there's a lot of work to do yet. There will be a time for champagne in the months ahead. It just wasn't today. Today is the door opened and now it's time to sit down at the table and ask some questions. And if the Coyotes can do the same job they did tonight through all of the steps over the next few months, I think that looks very promising because they did have the right answers tonight. They did say the right things tonight. And they did sound like they're trying to build a partnership with the city that they were mostly going to finance themselves. So they said the right things. Now if those continue over the next few months, I think this can only continue to be positive news for Coyote fans and honestly, for the residents of Tempe. Like this is a good thing. And I know if you're living right next door to it, yeah, maybe not. But everybody else, they're going to love it. Like the guy, when we, when the Coyotes moved to Glendale, there was a guy that had this old house with a little couple of cows by, by, I don't think he liked it. I think he's probably pissed, but then the football stadium moved in and bought his land and I'm sure he's fine now. But there, so there are going to be those, those, this is going to ebb and flow over the next few months. It really is. But I think that was very encouraging to see signs of relationship building today. When we saw Glendale and the Coyotes fall apart, we're seeing Tempe and, and the Coyotes coming together a little bit today. And I think that's incredibly encouraging, um, a, a sign for, for the, for the hockey fans in the valley.
Absolutely. And we have some more video courtesy of Tiersen and Shane from city council. So we have Javier Gutierrez talking about today's decision and what it means for fans.
Do you have a message for fans after getting past this point and maybe just how excited they should be or what to expect?
Today is a great night. They should absolutely be excited. We know we still have a long way to go and we'll acknowledge that. But tonight's the night to celebrate. This is the first step of something that we know is got a great, great, uh, vision and a great opportunity to really be, uh, the home that all these fans and our fans in waiting have deserved. And it's just an exciting, exciting night and we're truly, truly blessed and, and honored and want to thank again the, the city of Tempe for this approval.
Feels like echoing kind of what we said here is there's a long way to go, but you know, let's enjoy this moment because it's so rare that as Coyotes fans, we get to have moments of celebration like this. It's so rare.
Yeah, but it could have ended, right? Leah, like it could have been, that could have been it. This could have been, oh shit, it got, now what? And now we'd be scrambling going, oh Mesa, or maybe downtown, we'd be back to that bullshit. And, and it could have been, but it's not. So in having said that, that is a time to celebrate because it could have literally died tonight and it could have been all over and it's not. So I, I do think it's a, it's a day to celebrate for a Coyotes fan. Just maybe not crack open the good champagne yet.
Just the bottom shelf champagne.
One thing I, I want to bring up before we get out of here is that, you know, we heard a few of the council members talking about the sports betting aspect of this, and it almost felt like they were going to go down the, and I don't know if you guys remember this from the Scottsdale city council stuff, but the hockey gangs kind of rhetoric that we heard during the Scottsdale thing, that crime was somehow going to go up by having, uh, a, a sports venue. But the sports gambling aspect seems so ridiculous to me because anybody with a phone can be sports gambling in Tempe right now. It's not as if this changes the dynamic of anything going on in the state. It really felt like grasping at straws. So I don't foresee that being any hurdle, even though it was brought up in this meeting.
It's so true.
I think you said that, that the hurdles, they seem to recognize what those hurdles are. The housing, the noise ordinances, the, the height of the cranes, the FAA, the sports gaming. I think they know what the major hurdles are and I think they have answers to those. So that encourages me too. And, and here at the DraftKings Sportsbook app, we'd sure like you to be using that on your phone.
I was just going to say, I've actually never placed a bet in a sports book in my life because I only just use this DraftKings Sportsbook app. You could use it pretty much anywhere. If you're in a, a state where sports betting is legal, it's so easy to use and you all should be using it too. And if you haven't signed up already, be sure to do so this week. Use that promo code PHNX when you sign up and join in on the finals action with the DraftKings Sportsbook app, an official sports betting partner of the NBA. New customers can make any $5 NBA bet and get $150 in free bets instantly. This NBA season, a customer placed a $5 same game parlay and won over $5,000. So download that DraftKings Sportsbook app now. You don't need to be at a sports book to use it. And that is at some people we heard from today. Use the promo code PHNX when you sign up. Make any $5 bet during the NBA finals, get $150 in free bets instantly. That's promo code PHNX, only a DraftKings Sportsbook, an official sports betting partner of the NBA. That's 21 and over, Arizona only gambling problem. Call 1-800-NEXTSTEP. New customers only, minimum $5 deposit. Eligibility restrictions apply. See draftkings.com/sportsbook for details. And I want to make sure we get to some of the super chats that we've had coming in tonight. First of all, thank you everyone for your super chats. We'll start with Sammy D here, always throwing Mike Smith in a comment, no matter what we're talking about. We're officially Tempe bound folks. And yes, Mike Smith has proven again tonight that he is an incompetent man, baby. I'm surprised animal control was not called on Lauren Kubi. Karens are dangerous. Oh my goodness. I have no com, further comments on that one. Let's get the other super chats. By the way, I saw another one from Drew Greb, another $50.
Thanks, Drew.
Appreciate that so much, Drew, for your support. Ruler14, $20 super chat. Of course, we can't forget that the Arizona Coyotes are responsible for tragedies such as 9/11 and the JFK assassination. I think this is in reference to everybody thinking the Coyotes are somehow responsible for all of these horrible things. So thank you, Ruler14. And another $10 super chat from Ruler14. It's funny that they had the airport advocates go right after the people who debunked their concerns. Of course, they couldn't plan that, but it was funny to hear them talk about stuff that was just addressed. That is true. It was, and I know Craig said it in the beginning, it was so refreshing to finally see all of that debunked, that stuff that's been building up for so long.
I have a question and this is probably addressed to Craig. What, what's, why are the, the, the union, the union people, what was that all about? Why are they in such deference to this project? Why do they not want this to go through?
Any second now.
Any second, or maybe not.
Or maybe not.
Oh, I lost Craig. Yeah, because it was, it was, it was union rep after union rep with
No, Cody's on Espo's head.
Yeah. It, it was just union rep after union rep. And I, I guess, why are we beating up on the Coyotes? I didn't quite get it, but
I think it's to make a point that it better be union, uh, union workers. Otherwise, you know, you're going to have a problem when this goes further along. So I, I think it was as simple as that. And, you know, it, it sounds like the Morello group has worked with unions before they brought that up. The city council talked about that. My guess was just to make the point, hey, we better be at the negotiating table too, you know?
Yeah. Well, I tell you what, what a day. Went into the next day.
For you over on the East Coast.
Yeah. Yeah. When we, I will say this, when we started to plan this show and we saw the meeting, what a time to start, like three?
Two.
Start at three? Two o'clock Arizona time. Oh, okay. I literally was worried that my cut into my dinner. I said, well, I better eat dinner early, which I did tonight.
What's early for you? Three o'clock?
Yeah. So I eat dinner early to make sure this didn't cut, trust me, this did not cut into my dinner plans at all. Was not a concern. This went way longer. And if they have a three minute time limit on all the people, why the hell didn't we have that on Lauren Kubi? Why didn't she have a three minute timeframe?
I thought we were going to do the show like that where we each only had three minutes to share our thoughts and we were out, so.
Yeah. Well, wait, I think she's still talking. Wait, we're going to cut back.
She's filibustering.
Yeah.
Now she's still before the midnight cutoff.
She's out. She's leaving in two months. That's, that was the worst part of it. You're leaving HK, like drop the mic and go home. Sorry. Sorry. I just, it's late here, so I get a
Oh, my gosh.
Here's Craig back now.
Here's Craig back.
Did you get the question, Craig?
I didn't.
Okay. Well, nevermind then. We were just talking about the unions and the union people coming up over. I just wanted to know if you had any thoughts on it.
On, on what? I'm sorry.
The union? Was it case? Is that, what, what was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the hospitality union. It's hotels, it's food service. They've, they've been acting, if active in a lot of these things. They just want some concessions. They want to unionize it. We'll see where that goes. That's just part of the negotiation. So they, but they've been active. They've been active on this, this deal from the start. So they have definitely been a significant player.
See, I knew Craig would know.
Absolutely. Craig knows everything and I know the, the meeting has already happened, but if you haven't read his primer, it gives a lot more information. He actually writes about the union in the story today. That story is not behind the paywall. So anybody can read it, but we encourage you to become a member at phnx.com so you can read all the incredible content there. We have draft content coming behind the paywall. We have the amazing content from all of our writers here at PHNX, um, not just Coyotes, but all of it. So become a member today. The members only Discord tonight. It was like an all time unbelievable. I was laughing out loud. It was a blast in there. Like if you were not part of the members only Discord tonight, like tonight was the night to be in it. I'm sure there'll be some other hilarious nights in the Discord, but come hang out in there, become a member to join. It's a blast. So we can't thank everybody enough for watching, all of your comments and I, I see them. It's going to take us a few days even. There were so, it was an eight hour meeting and then we went, you know, jumped to live immediately. So there'll still be some stuff to process. We're going to have an audio episode tomorrow to kind of work through some more of it. You know, some stuff that we didn't even get to on this show because it's late for a lot of us. Any final notes tonight from you three? And I'll start with Craig since he's on the delay. Craig, any final notes from tonight?
I've just, for the, for this to happen, it, it just sort of sets up the entire summer for the Coyotes. The fact that this was a positive, this has a chance to be a watershed off-season for the Coyotes. You're, you're moving ahead now with the arena deal. You've got this massive draft coming up. These are two things that'll really set the tone, build the foundation. really set the tone, build the foundation for this franchise. So it's going to be really exciting to cover all of this. Leah, you and I are going to be at the draft, of course. PD Espo will be back here. I don't know where you'll be, Espo, actually. You haven't told us anyway.
At the draft party.
Yep. So there you go. You guys will be at the draft party. Leah and I will be in Montreal covering the draft with Jacob Franklin. That's going to be a huge event for the Coyotes. The arena news will continue throughout the offseason, but I, I think when we get to the next season, even though we're not expecting it to be a successful season on the ice for the Coyotes and they have to play at the multipurpose arena, there're going to be a lot of pieces in, in place where there could be a lot of pieces in place where we can start to see what the future of this franchise is going to look like. So it's going to be a fun summer, actually covering the Coyotes and writing these stories that I'll be writing.
I agree with you, Craig, about the, the summer and it's just one domino after the other. And this is the first domino and then it's the draft and it's prospect camp. And then it's getting into development camp and then, and then we'll be rolling into the season. I agree to all those things. My question, Craig, before you go is it's June. Season starts in October. Where will this arena deal be by then, by October? Are we going to be much farther along? And when we say months, are we literally meaning months or are we meaning years? Do you think by October, this will have been pushed further down the field?
Well, I do think it'll be pushed further down the field, but what, what state it'll be in, I have no idea. First of all, you're dealing with the municipality, you're dealing with the EPA, you're dealing with the FAA. There's a lot of variables and a lot of bureaucracy involved in this deal. I just hope that by the time we hit the fall, we're going to have concrete plans to say, yes, we're moving ahead with the arena. Imagine being able to say that with all those draft picks stockpiled and maybe some more draft picks stockpiled that they acquire more at the draft. Imagine being able to have all of that in place when you set foot in the multipurpose arena for the first game. At least you can point to that and say, look, this is in fact temporary and look what's coming down the pike.
Anyone else? Final notes?
No, I mean, I'm excited. I'm excited. And I, I say this all the time and I get preachy and so boxy sometimes. PHNX jumped into the Coyotes market at the exact right time. We're going to grow together. And all of these things that we're talking about, whether it's Dylan Gunther or the draft or the draft picture, the rebuild or the arena, it will happen here. And I'm telling you, you can't find anything about the Coyotes unless you find it here. And I'll go a step farther. This is better than most, like even hockey markets. Like this is kind of good content, like Tristan being there live, Craig being wherever the hell he is. I'm still don't believe he's on vacation. But no, in all seriousness, get, if you're not on our Twitter, I don't know why you're not because if you want to find out what's going on, you literally hear it here first. You're not going to hear it at, at the big national media outlets, you're going to hear it here. And it's been really exciting to be a part of this. And now I hope I know they're scouting locations for that PHNX bar. Hmm. Kind of got an idea where one could go. I, I saw right in the meats location.
Ted, as they were calling it.
Right in the meats. Fancy meat store. Could be the PHNX bar. Just saying.
Oh my gosh.
Look, I'm, I'm thrilled for Coyotes fans because there is not a group of more dedicated, passionate fans who have been through more than their fair share of crap over the last, you know, two and a half decades. Tonight is that first step. I can't wait to see opening night out there, hopefully in Tempe in a handful of years. You all have earned it and I am off to go try to find bizarre meats because it's got to be somewhere in town.
Hey, if we don't get a bar in the Ted, we should have bizarre meats on the menu at the PHNX.
My God. That's the entree. Bizarre meats. I love it. It's like appetizer entree plate. I like.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think I'd order that if I saw it on the menu. And also Charles pointed out in the chat, we hit a certain Twitter milestone today. That's right. We blew past it. Um, I will have to eat fake maple syrup, unfortunately, but thank you all for the support on our Twitter at PHNX underscore Coyotes. I promise you I'll do it in the next week. I will not delay months like PD has with his dance, but maybe he's with a dance coach. He's in New York City. There might be more resources there. So I'm going to plan to do it next Friday on our Friday fun day episode. So that's, I'm saying it right now. Craig better come prepared with whatever disgusting syrup he is going to provide for that. Um, on behalf of Coyotes fans, I just, this is kind of the most hope I've felt in a really long time. Um, I remember watching the live stream of the last time there was a crazy long city council meeting. I was actually also on the East Coast, like PD is now. I was in Toronto. I was staying up super, super, super late. And I remember just actually like crying tears of relief when, you know, things went okay. And this feels better than that. Um, this feels like there's hope. Like, like Craig mentioned, um, just to see that video of the renderings, to see the passion of the fans, to see the passion of Javier Gutierrez, of, um, you know, just all the people there in support. And of course there's some issues and no one's ever going to agree on this issue. And you know, I think they'll work those out in time. That's why they're going to be able to have these negotiations and have these discussions and hopefully they'll iron those things out. But I think that overall, this is going to be the best decision for the city, for the fans, for the team and the future of this franchise. And I am so, so, so excited and I cannot wait. I cannot wait.
I think you summed it up, Leah.
All right. Well, everyone, again, in the comments, watching live, listening later on YouTube, listening later on audio, leave us a review, like the video, like our podcasts, leave us a five star review wherever you get your podcasts. Follow us on Twitter at PHNX underscore Coyotes. Follow PHNX Sports across all platforms as well. Like I said, we'll have an audio episode tomorrow, kind of, you know, hashing out our thoughts once more after we slept on it. We'll do some Friday fun. Don't bother Craig. He's on vacation, but even though PD's.
Yeah, be, be ahead of bothering me though. That's fine.
Yeah, PD at the playoffs.
Why don't we just record the audio right now?
Yeah. It's, what is it? 2 AM there now?
Yeah, it's 2:15. Let's just do it now.
Espo, thank you so much for joining us. Espo has been, you know, an Arizona sports person. I don't know.
That was fun having Espo here. Just fun having a different voice. It was fun. We had, we had Tristan. It was fun.
I was here in case Craig's internet totally crapped out and you needed that additional voice here. Uh, just happy to support you guys. Uh, you do fantastic work on this program and proud to have you guys as a part of the PHNX family. And, uh, thank you for letting me.
How else would we have known about the bizarre meats if you weren't here?
I know.
All right, everyone. Well, it's a night we'll remember for a long time until the next, hopefully no more eight hour city council meetings, but I don't think it'll be the last city council meeting that we'll be covering on this network. Thank you all so much for watching. Enjoy your night. Be safe. Have a great night and we'll talk to everyone tomorrow.